I'd like to call to order, City Council Work Session, July 17th. It's now 5:00. There will be a regular meeting tonight following the work session as well as a special meeting. We are all here. We have only one item on the agenda. And again, I'd like to remind council to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete. So at 3.1, the staff will provide the council with the background information for policy direction and future options for four city-owned facilities located at Litchfield Road and Western Avenue. Facilities and Fleet Manager Christine Smith will present. Christine?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here to talk about four selected facilities for your consideration as far as their future use. And I'm trying to get my buttons to work.
Battery?
I don't know.
You're battering the keyboard?
Yeah, it's good. I'm being initiated. Excuse me.
That's all right. It took three people to turn my iPad on. I tell you.
I apologize.
Relax.
Battery or something? Keyboard?
Hey, I've been known how to push buttons to people. That might be...
Oh!
No, Bill gets that honor.
Pushing buttons?
You hear that, Bill?
It was not from my lips.
It was mine either.
Or me.
Who would've said something like that?
Are we set now?
I'm having far too much fun, I'm sorry.
For the audience that is listening, we're having problems with the presentation, so hold on a minute.
All right, we'll do it every time. All right. We'll start again. I don't know how to get rid of that little screen. But Mayor, council members, we are here to talk about four facilities located at Western and Litchfield. As part of this presentation, we're going to review some background information to review the facilities' master plan, the general building information, their conditions. We're going to talk about the campus, which includes the parking for this area, as well as budget impacts and other items to take into consideration as you evaluate options for these locations. Okay.
Everybody but the IT.
Can you go to next?
Is that working?
He's mine.
Well...
Oops, is that right?
Oh, good. We are active.
Javier, somebody stay up there.
Wake it up.
Okay, nobody's going to stay up there. Okay. Yeah, can I call somebody that will come and sit beside her so she can help it through if she has it again? Or you're going to be fast-moving up? Okay. Go ahead.
All right, so what I have in front of you now is our photos of the location. So one is an aerial showing the call center, the old city hall, the squad center, and the PECOS, excuse me, not PECOS, the police evidence building. In addition to that, to try to orient you, we also have them listed on the right-hand side. These are four buildings and four separate parcels. They add up to 47,000 square feet parcel size, and the buildings are close to about 9,500 square feet. The buildings on the very southwest corner of this complex are owned by other entities, and we have Sunny's Boxing and Barber Shop, and we also have the Pure Patio working in this main building in between. And then also to the very right-hand corner, we have the Amerix Building, which provides tax and immigration services. So I want to take you back a little bit to talk briefly about the facilities' master plan, which is why I'm here today. In the facilities' master plan, this plan talks about future city operations and growth needs, and as part of this plan, it was recommended that once these properties were vacated, that they should be surplus because there are no additional city operational needs for these locations. So I'm going to go briefly into each building to talk about, again, their size, as well as what may be unique about them, as well as some additional information. So the call center is our oldest facility. It was built in 1946, and it is about 69 years old. It's just over 1,000 square feet, at 1,190 square feet, and the lot size is just over 6,000 square feet. It's been used for a variety of city functions. And the last function was the 911 call center. They vacated the facility in May of 2014 and moved to the new telecommunications facility at the Goodyear Municipal Complex. Some of the unique aspects, if you see the red circle up there on the right-hand corner, that is depicting where the time capsule is, that is scheduled to be open in 2021 as part of the 75th anniversary. It is filled with memorabilia and historical documents, and that will be an exciting day. Also, we have a raised floor still in that location because of the IT functions. We also recently completed environmental studies for all of these buildings, so that we're prepared to move forward if that's the decision. And for this particular facility, we did identify some small areas where asbestos and lead is present. And that's pretty typical for buildings of this age and can be managed depending on the use of the facilities in the future. Old City Hall Police Administration is a little bit towards the left when you look at that picture in front of us. That's the, that building was built in 1963. It's about 54 years old, 3,400 square feet, and the parcel is just over 14,800 square feet. The unique features here, there's a lot of offices. There's also some evidence of police activity. There is a pull-down chain door. There's also a small courtyard. This building, too, has small levels of asbestos and lead that would have to be addressed if there's ever any remodeling or refurbishment to this building. The police squad center was also built in 1955. It's 62 years old, 2,800 square feet on a parcel, about 6,000 square feet. Unique features here includes holding cells with toilet facilities, stainless steel countertops that are built in as part of the cabinets, and also we found some additional asbestos and lead evident in this building as well. Police evidence, actually, we secured this facility in 1990. However, it was built in 1953, 64 years old, just over 2,000 square feet, and the parcel is the largest of all combined, and it's just over 20,000 square feet. The unique features here, there's a lot of offices. There's also some evidence of police activity. There is a pull-down chain door. There's also a small courtyard. This building, too, has small levels of asbestos and lead that would have to be addressed if there's ever any remodeling or refurbishment to this building. The police squad center was also built in 1955. It's 62 years old, 2,800 square feet on a parcel, about 6,000 square feet. Unique features here includes holding cells with toilet facilities, stainless steel countertops that are built in as part of the cabinets, and also we found some additional asbestos and lead evident in this building as well. Police evidence, actually, we secured this facility in 1990. However, it was built in 1953, 64 years old, just over 2,000 square feet, and the parcel is the largest of all combined, and it's just over 20,000 square feet. The unique features here is that it's all red brick on the exterior, and many of the office walls are also red brick, currently covered with drywall. There is metal security fencing inside. There still remains a bank vault from its original owner, which I believe was Valley Bank, and it, too, has a variety of offices. This facility also has asbestos and lead. In addition to that, we found some mold due to some leaking areas in the restroom area that has been remediated and removed.
It has.
Yes, it has. So one of the important aspects of this property is parking. What I'd like to point out is, in the areas where you see the blue stars, we have various parking that is controlled by the city. The area around the red belongs to the other occupants on this site, and the Amerix location on that right-hand corner has no onsite parking. They rely completely on the public spaces along Western Avenue. In total, the city has about 55 spaces. The other businesses combined have about 20, and then the on-street is about 30. And one thing I'll point out is it's scattered throughout the location, and that's just something to factor in, maybe depending on how these locations may be used in the future. Okay, so we're going to talk about different items to consider as you review the future for these parcels. As I stated earlier, these buildings are aging, but they're in fair condition. There are some environmental issues that will need to be addressed if there is any tenant improvements or remodeling. As long as these items are contained in their current form, they don't pose a hazard. But again, if we touch them, that will change. So the ongoing maintenance in their current state is estimated to cost about $30,000 annually, and that cost is expected to increase over time. For example, we include utilities. We have water, we have electric, we have maintenance needs, pest control, various repairs. And one of the reasons we keep the utilities on is because we have to support the fire suppression systems. We also need to take care of the landscaping to make sure that we don't become an eyesore for the area, and it also just shows a presence versus a completely vacated area. Long-term, there are going to be needs for these buildings, in part because there was an effort to keep the buildings operational, as evidence that they were used all the way up until January of 2017 for the most part. But several of these systems are reaching their life end. HVAC units range anywhere from five to six years old to closer to 20 years old. So we've already met their life expectancy, and those will be needed, need to be changed in the future. The evidence building in particular will need to be re-roofed or additional coatings added within the next five years. The asphalt, also for the entire complex, is very old. There is evidence of alligator cracking and other needs in order to try to prevent the pavement from further degradation. So if I think about it, over the next five years, we're looking at over $200,000 just to try to keep the buildings in their current condition, and I can tell you, that will be rough. Some of those systems, for example, the fire sprinklers, will eventually need to be changed out, so we're buying time right now. The facilities' master plan, the general plan, and the PAD and subsequent ordinance are items that have been before this council in the past. The facilities' master plan is a plan that identifies or identified the space needs when it was first approved by council in 2016. It also tries to project future needs depending on how the city operations grow. As part of this plan, it was identified that once these facilities were vacated, that they could be surplus, and in part, that's because operationally, there's no need, and future growth can be accommodated at the 157th Avenue Campus, as well as the new PD Ops Center, and potentially the Future City Hall that you're very familiar with. The general plan that was adopted in 2014 also identifies this area as a village, and it has some special interests because of its location on Western, and as well as the neighborhood interest in this particular area. The Western Avenue Planned Area Development and the ordinance was passed in 2008, and this allows that parcel to be used eventually for commercial purposes that are sized for that type of community amenity, if you want to call it that, such as smaller-scale businesses. It could be anything from restaurants or bars to antique stores, cultural facilities, et cetera. Some uses require permits, and other uses are prohibited. For example, pawn shops, automobile service stations, body shops, and things of that nature. So when you keep all of those, all of that background in mind, we've brought, we're providing you some potential options to consider. And as part of considering these options, it's important to remember that there is ongoing cost to support these facilities. Any of these options can be considered in all or part, and they are in the order of potential costs for the city. And referencing, again, the facility master plan, selling was the first option because the city, again, has no operational need for this location. In summary, we have four vacant buildings, a lot size of over 47,000 square feet, and we have the master plan to consider, as well as the general plan and ordinance. And with that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you very much. All right, council, discussion?
I have a question.
Joanne?
Thank you for the presentation. You know, obviously, we have very few buildings of this age in our city, so they're, they're important, and, you know, the fact that it has that time capsule there is, is pretty cool and neat. Besides knowing what its uses have been for our city, and I was told that long ago that the Boy Scouts originally housed in one of those buildings that it started, is there any other historic value? Did, you know, like, did President Reagan sleep here? I mean, is there something that we're missing that has not been investigated? Just to see if there's anything that we're missing in age, and maybe there's not because we've had it for so long. I just don't know. I don't know the history completely of all the buildings. I've just, you know, of the things I've been told over the years. But, but I would be interested in that. That obviously doesn't change the cost and the price of what we're facing with it, but there's, you know, sometimes those historic things, you can't value so well. And so I'm just curious if you've, has anybody investigated that, or have you heard of anything else?
Councilwoman Osborne, I can follow up on that. As far as during the city ownership time, what I have been able to find is that it was used by fire volunteers, and I'm not sure if anybody else has any other information for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. That's my question.
Jo?
To me, I think it would be helpful, the cost to rehab each one of those buildings to a standard that we can actually put somebody in there without having some legal liabilities. Second all, what would that value be once that happens? Is it going to be exceeding what we can actually sell it for? So maybe then rehabbing it might not be an effort because the cost to rehab it, to put it in the conditions to sell, value-wise, may be like a sunk, putting money down a rabbit hole. And then the third is, is there value in actually leveling the buildings on the raw land and seeing if we can get somebody to maybe put something up in its place? So those are the three areas that, that kind of jump out at me to decide what to do with these, these particular buildings. Thank you.
Sherri?
Okay, I guess I think about this two ways, with my heart and with my head. I think the heart, when I look at these buildings, we don't have any buildings, like you go on down the street to Avenue, and you see what they've done with that area. If this is something, and I don't know if it's been shopped around as a possible, to put other things in there before we decide whether there's value to rehab it at all, because my head says, well, financially, this isn't the best, it's, these buildings have a lot of problems. But when I look at that area and knowing that the shopping center across the street is closed, and, you know, the Ace Hardware across the street is closed, I don't know, and I guess that might be a question for Michelle, if, is this an area that would be marketable to kitschy little restaurants or antique or like a little cluster of funky little shops and with Pure Patio? I mean, there's some cool stuff there now, and the Gem and stuff.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Laura Tano. I think, you know, if we've looked into this, and we have thought about that, because we certainly appreciate Sunny's being there, as well as Pure Patio, and I think, you know, what we have encountered is because, you know, they're really willing to take a chance in that area, what we've found is that it isn't very marketable for, at this point. We really have to rehab it and see what we could get after we rehabbed it, and then if we wanted to try to attract something like that, it certainly is possible, I would say somewhat unlikely. And then if we, if we did, if you went through those different scenarios of what you'd want to do, I think it would be, you know, depending on, on what you made it, you know, you improved it to be, to look like. And we certainly have had some folks be interested in that, and I think this might be part of the discussion is in the higher education area. Those two buildings that are over there that look like the, the old, let's see if it's the old city hall up there that kind of are connected, that look kind of like they could be a campus, we certainly had some interest there. But usually, I can tell you, when they've gone and looked at the area, they've kind of said, no, probably we need more around us for that. So it's really someone who'd be willing to take a chance on it, and so we haven't had much success in, in trying to kind of attract that kitschy sort of, sort of thing.
And a lot of it is just because the, there's not a lot of stuff in the other corners.
Exactly. Exactly. There's not a lot around there, and, you know, we certainly have had people talk about wanting to look, you know, you had Dave Scholl kind of saying, you know, looking at that area and saying, do you have any old buildings? And we definitely get that, that question a lot, but I'm not sure that that, I'm not sure if we were to, you know, rehab it with that expectation that that would, that would be met. So I'd be, I'd be hesitant to do that.
No, I think that gives me a lot of good perspective. Thank you.
Well, excuse me, Molly?
Well, I would like to know how much it would cost us to demolish it completely, and then possibly...
Michelle, can you kind of stay up there? Excuse me, I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
And then I would like to, I would like a clarification of something you were talking about on the 911 system, because I didn't, I couldn't hear what you said, and it had, you said it has something because of the IT system. What does it have?
It's just the raised floor, so that, that would have to be removed.
I thought it was really something exciting, I guess. That's why I wrote it down. Yeah, I know it's got a raised floor. I've seen it. I'm sorry. Okay. And then, let's see, I would like to know, I just can't believe it costs us $30,000 for upkeep. I mean, have we been upkeeping the 911 building that's been empty since May of '14? Have we been paying utilities in that building?
That is correct. In part...
It's like pouring money down a rabbit hole.
It, it is difficult, and in part, if you don't condition the buildings at all, then you start having the building even further, start experiencing more problems. Things can start peeling, the wood can start cracking, there can be all sorts of...
It already looks like that, dear. I know. You're talking to the choir here. I've seen it. I've walked the buildings.
Yep.
Yeah, I know. I just didn't realize we were expending that amount of money on those empty buildings, and I'm very disappointed we've been doing that.
Well, it's kind of...
But I'd like to know how much it would cost us to demo it completely. It won't cost us anything to sell it other than a commission, I guess, but I, I, I'm really not convinced we're going to get any buyers that would want to buy out those, those buildings, so.
Okay.
And we can't use them because you've already said there's lead in it, and there's this, and there's mold, and there's that, so we can't give it to anybody because they're going to have to come in and completely redo the buildings themselves, and I don't know anyone that has that deep of pockets to start to do those in that area. Wish we did, but I don't think we do.
Bill?
I have like three thoughts going through my mind. With Michelle sitting there, I'll start with that one. You know, you talked about the ability to utilize these existing buildings if they were demoed, and now this was property. Does that raise the likelihood that perhaps somebody may want to pick up the empty parcel and put something in down there? You can say no.
I would say no. It doesn't, in my opinion. I think that having the, the buildings there and having what you're really looking at in terms of like an economic development or, or some kind of, it's really a lease, you know, type of situation, not really, I mean, that's my opinion, you know, sell, to be able to sell it would be really rough to get it into selling condition and then, but to be able to lease it at a certain rate, I mean, I think that's the real strength that the, that the city has with keeping those buildings.
So you're saying, keep, rehab them, keep them, and try to lease them is better than tearing them all down?
I mean, if you're asking my opinion, yes, that's what I would say.
That's interesting. Okay. Okay, the, thanks. The other question that I had was, I think it was the second to last slide, so can we go backward? There's, on a couple of these areas, we say missed opportunity for other city needs and interests, and it's in the partnership one, and demo one, and the sell one, so I'm assuming it's in the lease one. But if the facility master plan called for us to abandon or surplus these buildings, then how is that really a con? Is this missed opportunity if, I'm trying to picture the missed opportunity when we had intended to get rid of it anyway? So how does that fall into...
That's more of a general statement, that if the city has, or the council has other interests, if things change, that maybe this property could provide an opportunity in the future.
Okay, but what, so, and just to be clear, you had talked about, we're $30,000 annual in expenses for the buildings, and within the next five years, we're going to need more than $200,000 to make major repairs. I didn't want to put words in your mouth, is that...
Yes, and I would say that's partial repairs.
Okay, but they're major. So if we say five years, at, you know, $30,000 a year to maintain them, that's $150,000 plus another, we're close to half a million dollars for property that we may or may not be able to lease in an area that has extremely limited parking and, and there's really not, I want to say there's not an attract, I mean, there's nothing drawing, drawing anyone there. So I'm, I guess I'm asking questions and making a statement at the same time. So for me, I just assume, we need to get, we need to save the money, get it off the books, tear it down, and perhaps let, put that property up for sale and see if someone wants to build something there. That's where I, that's where I stand.
I'm going to interject, so what is the value of the property as long as he asks that question? You know, what, square foot, how much are they selling with square footage?
With or without buildings?
Yeah, with, without the buildings. The land itself.
Just land.
There's the value.
Yeah.
Do you have that answer? I have some preliminary information.
We won't hold you to it exactly, so just kind of give us a ballpark.
Yeah.
I have an estimated value of $207,000. I have an estimated value of $207,000 for the properties in the northwest corner and approximately $101,000 for the building on Western, the old evidence building.
If I could just, could I just add a little bit to that, to the, you know, the value of the property and just the thought of, of demoing the property. And the only reason that comes to mind is, is kind of the neighborhood and the area that you've got around there and kind of, you know, vacant land. We're having trouble moving a lot of property in that area as it is. And so, that's one of the reasons for my answer earlier is that you would like to keep something up there nice and maybe not vacant and maybe leased out. You're not going to get much money for it for a lease, even if you fix it up. You're not going to get much money for it. So, it's not going to be a moneymaker. But if you demo the property, and is why I gave that answer, is that if you demo the property, you've kind of got vacant property there and not a whole lot of chances to, to sell it for a good price unless you want to sell it for something very low. But getting someone to build on it would be tough.
Any other questions? Yes, Brandon?
So, that area along the one, the building, one building along Western, can we, that back parking lot, could that be taken as well for a building? I'm thinking of like the library in Avondale and also the boys, the boys and girls' club. They built like two-story type buildings. They redid that area. If we were to give like a nonprofit or something the land for free to build some kind of community type service area or something like that, some deal like that, that would attract more things down there.
Yeah. And I think that's a discussion for, for you to have. I mean, for me to answer that would be, I think that's possible, that's certainly a social service need, might, might really want to, to be there. Yes.
And then, have we had anything across the street, any movement at all from any of the...
No. From the south, the shopping center there? No, we haven't. And we've, we thought we, you know, we thought we were moving towards something exciting for it, but then it turned out not to be so. Just recently, we had a meeting with someone that we thought might, might be able to help us move it. So, we're, we're trying to certainly get in touch with those property owners and get them to kind of move it. It's, it's got a very interesting history, and I'm sure Brian knows it much better than I do. But, and, and kind of why it's not, somebody, you know, the owner doesn't really want to do something with it right now. But it's just, it's, we definitely are reaching out and trying to get, because that is a big, that is a big part of, of why, you know, that area isn't really viable right now.
Yeah. Because it got a lard, and my speaker's huge.
I'm sorry.
No, this thing is like, no. Because that parking lot's huge, and they got that nice crosswalk right there that lights up to go across, back and forth there. So...
Put it still closer to you because somehow it blocks it. Thank you.
Yeah. So, the parking lot across the street there is that nice crosswalk that goes back and forth there too. So, is that alleyway there? Is that part of the city too? Or is that a, something else in between?
It is a shared alley with the residents and our property.
The one in between the hair cutting and Pure Patio?
Oh, are you talking about...
It's across the street.
No, I'm in the, I'm in, there's a little space in between the hair cutting and Pure Patio.
Yeah, let me...
That is a public walkway?
Show this. So, if you look at the map in front of you, you can see the area in the red as well as the gold. And that, that is an easement area. So, we do share egress and ingress with those properties.
Okay. But that little tiny, that's, that's the owners that are there now, that little spot. We walked it down last month.
Yes. Are you talking about towards the 160...
Towards Western, off Western?
He's talking about in the middle of where...
That parking area is.
Okay, Christopher knows it's private.
Christopher's out there lately.
That's private? Okay. I'm just curious.
It's private.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. I think that's the only questions I had.
Yeah, everything in red is in private.
I like, I like a mix of, of a couple of the options together.
Go ahead. Do you have another question? Go ahead.
I don't want the question. It's more of a statement in my opinion, but...
All right. You want to wait or you want to know?
I'm good.
501-3C's. They have a lot of them. They're all looking around for someplace so that, then that's something if we do, we have to, cost is going to be there. But what does that say on reputation for the city or for the community, saying we haven't given up on you, historical Goodyear? We're trying to add to it. They're old buildings, but they're just the type of buildings that those organizations want, and they are a cost. And everybody that does it, Surprise does it, Avondale does it. We don't do much of that. And people always ask, how come? I always say, we don't have a building. Whoops, now we got some buildings. It's going to cost us, but, so you have to think of the humanistic side of it. I know it sounds like a lot of money, but in the whole compass of what we're doing in this city, that isn't a lot of money. And I just think it tells historical Goodyear, we're, we're not giving up on you. We're still, we're still thinking about you. There is some action going in the building on the, on the commercial building on that corner. Lots of action. Nothing that's being talked about now, nothing is, but it, it's a hot building where Lockheed was. It's a lot, a lot of action, a lot of people looking at it. Important. So, so we just kind of, you know, hold off and start repairing these buildings and get them in, in, in good shape. That gives us, that gives us, you know, more of a, a city because it's around the corner from Western, but it's still part of it. Who knows? Maybe this is what it would take to move it on. So, I'm, I'm kind of in between on this. So, all right.
Thank you.
Joanne?
I, I appreciate that, Georgia, because I'm, I'm right in line with your thinking. You know, I asked the question about the historic value just as a question, but that really wasn't my, my feeling about this area. And I, I can tell you, historically, there was a committee I was on, I don't, a billion years ago, that was the...
Revitalization.
The revitalization task force of Litchfield Road. And, and we, you know, we had, we had citizens, we had businesses, we had, you know, historic people of the area all looking at Litchfield Road.
That's where I have a Thompson funeral.
And, and it was the discussion, what do we do here? And we've never, ever given up on this area. And Western has, little by little, had art pieces put in. We've had grant funding for, for things. We've tried to give it appeal and, and, and I'm so thankful for the businesses that have continued to, to try to stay there. And, and that's very, that's very good. But I go to what you just said. I go to the fact that we have a fire station that we are, you know, exiting out of there. We do not have a human services department in our city. And so, we rely on all those nonprofits to come to our city to serve the needs of the people that we have. And this is a great location for that. To your point, yes, it costs money. Head and heart, I totally get it. If anybody just is a, is a financial person would say, oh, bulldoze it. You know what? This is ridiculous to put that kind of money into it. You just said it was like half a million dollars to put into it, and you just said it was only worth about $300,000 all of it together. I get it. Bulldoze it. But that's not the point. What are all those homes directly behind there going to be thinking of this area? And that we're vacating another point. That shopping center across the street? Michelle? I know how hard you try. I know how hard Brian's tried. I know how everybody is trying.
Yeah, I would say for the last, I've been on 12 years.
Oh.
We've been working on it for 12 years.
It's been 20 years that people have talked, oh, yeah, easy. So, you know, it's, it's definitely something that everyone has tried for. But I think that it will serve a purpose and it will serve a need. And I think that's far better than having a bunch of dirt that looks deserted, that makes the neighborhood not feel that it's going up rather than being demolished. And so that is...
It says we don't care.
That's right. And that's, that's my position.
Joe?
Yeah, I appreciate the concerns. For me, I can't see spending a half a million dollars. That's just my own personal perspective.
Wally?
Michelle, where are you? Can you give us any insight on the true value property? Is it in Goodyear? And is it going to stay vacant? Or who owns it? Or what are they doing with it?
Yeah. And I do, I need to get some background on that for you to give that to you. But I, because it is in the city of Goodyear.
Okay.
But, yeah, and I hear Councilmember Hampton.
Oh, yay. Sorry, Michelle.
That's okay.
We have depth in this staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a submittal right now, an application for a church user who's working on the project. So, that actually should be coming before the city council in the next month or so.
All right.
All right.
That's people. That's, that's traffic density. I think it was Wally next. Yes.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that if we, I don't know what we're going to do with the property, because I spoke my piece in executive session, and I'm not going to do it again. However, if we do demolish it, I was going to recommend we do a, a park, a nonpassive park there, which we could do very easily.
Sherry?
A little neighborhood park.
Sherry?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. If, if it ends up being demolished, we have to, we cannot leave just...
Dirt.
Dirt, land there. That's not fair to the people that live there. I would like to see if we have at least take that step to see if some nonprofits, when I was talking about Head and Heart. I mean, I just don't see just leaving that blanker, just having, it will make that whole area less attractive for the businesses that are there if it's just dirt. And it does make it look more rundown, which I don't think is what anybody wants, is just to have nothing there. If part of it, if a nonprofit, I think we need to shop it around before we start rehabbing and see who might be interested, how much they would be interested in, and then maybe rehab it in parts, you know? And then maybe if a nonprofit wants one, maybe a little diner will come in for one of the other ones and say, oh, now there's people, there's more people here that are coming and going. So, I would like to take the opportunity to see what are the opportunities there if we rehab it, kind of put some feelers out to see who would be interested. Maybe social services would be great. Who would be interested in what kind of partnerships we could have for this before we tear it down. Just kind of put those...
The neighbors.
Yes.
Maybe the neighborhood needs to be...
Yeah, maybe they need to know what do they need there. If they need social services, what kind of services would they like there? Or would they not like there as well? I think that's important, that we do have that input with the neighborhood and, you know, go into those meetings. Because I think that's, it could be a lot more. And maybe, I totally get what Michelle's saying. It's like, you see all this potential there, but it's not in the right spot for what the buildings could offer. They've got great buildings, but not necessarily in the right spot. So, I would like to see us put out feelers to see if the nonprofit and what, what could we do?
And Mayor, if I may, just a follow-up question to that is, are you looking at leasing or selling or both, just exploring both?
Let's see what's, if it's a nonprofit, if they want to buy it, maybe we see what they're interested in buying it for or leasing or, I'm, I'm open.
All doors open if you're going to keep the buildings.
Yeah.
Can I ask a word to the question?
Yeah, wait. First I have to go to, I have to go, Bill. Bill?
So, you know, I talked about, you know, obviously, the demolition piece. I'm assuming that the wood structures of the old city hall, the squad center, and the nine, the old 911 building are probably the most, in most need of repair. Wood, wood doesn't hold up as, as good as brick does. So, when we talk about re-roofing, you were talking about the, the wooden structures, not the brick on Western Avenue.
Actually, the evidence building on Western Avenue is the one that would need some additional roof work within the five years. But to your point, the call center is actually the area that is having some of the sewer line issues that would need to be addressed. And so, there are some special needs in that area.
So, would it, you know, my thought, not to demolish it and then leave it gravel throughout there, but if we were to turn that into a public parking area, those wood structures and the, the ones to the north there, nice little green belt in the front, you know, kind of green it up a little bit, a nice little parking area. And then that would allow those businesses in there to actually have some place to park. And then that leaves the 120 East Western Avenue building for us to potentially lease out because it's got storefront property, et cetera, et cetera, for this nonprofit thing. That may be a good middle of the road if that becomes the way. But, so I'll just leave it at that.
Wally?
I have a question for the attorney. I think I've already asked this, but months ago. Can our city, I know our city cannot give a facility to a nonprofit to use because you cannot gift it.
Generally, that's true.
Well, how, what's the generally part?
Well, generally, you're certainly the constitutional gift clause analysis, which says you can't give public resources to private entities without compensation or consideration. So, there are ways you could structure an arrangement that we're receiving public benefit. Maybe it's not dollars, but maybe, maybe they take over upkeep or remediation of the building. And that alleviates expenditures on our part. I mean, I, I think there's different ways you could look at it rather than just a straight-up lease for market value, if that makes sense.
Okay. Because smaller nonprofits don't have a lot of money, and they can't pay huge, high leases. So, if our city wants to negotiate a lot of money for these leases, some of these nonprofits who do need a home and could provide human services to our residents that need that sort of help, they're not going to be able to pay a, a, a lot of money because they, they don't have it. So, I would hope if our city is serious about possibly letting some of the nonprofits lease our buildings, that we are reasonable with the cost based on what they give back to the city. But truthfully, what I don't want to see, I don't want to see us abandon those buildings and just leave them the way they are because homeless people could move in and it just is inviting, I think, concern for that neighborhood. If they, once people know that there's nobody there, I think we're in for perhaps some more concern.
Yeah. I think my answer back to you is there are, there could be some options there on how you structure that sort of arrangement, other than just, this is what a market rate lease is.
Right. See, they can't do a market rate.
And I think there are some ways to structure it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any more discussion? Brandon?
Yeah, I like, I'm in favor of a mix of it, especially on Western. I think that, I'm hopeful that that area will come back with more things around the airport, with maybe that, that shopping center eventually having some more growth around there. And, I don't know. But I could see, I'm open to a lot of different options there. So, I'm hoping, especially one off of Western there. We already have five businesses or four businesses there. If that makes that one available to another business, there might, maybe there's something there.
We have a chance to bring you back a little bit.
Yeah. Who knows? Maybe Billy, maybe Billy Moore was lived right in that building right there.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Joanne?
The call center, did it have the most damage? Is that the one that had the most, that you were saying, the, well, I heard you say sewer, but was that mold? And, I mean, it had multiple issues?
Actually, that building does not have mold.
Okay.
And it did have some storm damage a few years ago, but all of that damage has been repaired on the roof in particular.
Okay. I was just thinking back to the mixed idea of if it, if the smaller, smaller facility had a lot of, you know, issues, bulldoze that one and open it up for the parking or for the green grass, or something like that, you know, a mixed, mixed idea.
Any other discussion? Well, then, thank you very much. Oh, yes. Brian?
Mayor, if I may, just to kind of wrap up, I know there's not a vote during work session. But just to recap the general direction, we've heard a lot of great discussion, a lot of great questions. Would it, does it meet the needs if we go ahead and do solicitation of nonprofits to either buy or lease, find out what the interest is in each and/or all of the buildings? And if we get kind of mixed reviews on that, at least see what we get. And then that may give us an opportunity to look at, you know, one of the alternatives is to remove some of the buildings, maybe not all, to allow for more parking because this area is very, has a lot of parking issues right now. So, the, just for follow-up, does it make sense to go ahead and ping the nonprofits first, see where we go, and then come back with a update at that point and then look for other options?
Let me look around the council. Yes. Yes, go forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. It was a nice presentation. Appreciate the information. Okay, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. At 6 o'clock, we'll start a regulating. This meeting is adjourned.